I mean, it's work, it's, once the tree has cut down, it's too late. So if you see something, say something, we'll, we'll check it out and make sure it's, it's legit. Okay, um, thank you for that, Madam Clerk, our next item.
As modified, we have one business discussion item this evening that we're adding, item number 170840 on the bottom of page 11. And this is Commissioner Harvey Ward's item, the discussion of potential resolution regarding firearms, with the recommendation that the city commission discuss and take action deemed appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ward, you put this item on the agenda, so I'll allow you to start us off. Also, Commissioner Hayes Santos, you added some backup, so maybe we'll, we'll turn to you after Commissioner Ward to present what it is that you would like us to consider, and then we'll open our deliberations. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will, in respect of everyone's, everyone's time, try to be relatively brief with this. Obviously, this was prompted by the tragedies in South Florida a couple of weeks ago. A sense of hopelessness is on my part, knowing that we are, as a, as a municipality, preempted, forbidden by the Florida Legislature from taking action on firearms issues. It occurred to me that a thing that we can do is make a statement. Just like all of you can make a statement, so can we, except ours has the logo of the City of Gainesville on it when we're all done with it. I wanted to give you all a chance to, to talk about, about this scourge, as well as give us an opportunity to have a place to stand on it as well. I put together a draft resolution, but I will tell you that, and I'm gonna just real fast read it, but, but I wanted, the nature of a resolution would take us a couple of meetings to actually pass it. By then, the Florida Legislature will be done with their annual session. So what I'm thinking more, and I'm not gonna make a motion yet, but what I'm thinking more is that we, perhaps, ask the mayor to write a letter encompassing some of these things to get to the Legislature quickly. But that's just a thought, again, I'm not gonna make a motion at this point. Let me read this briefly here. "A resolution in the City of Gainesville, Florida requesting that the Florida Legislature recognize gun violence as a public health and safety emergency, and that it take appropriate action to protect the citizens of Gainesville, or relieve restrictions placed on Florida cities and counties to allow us to take action. Whereas the tragic shooting deaths of 14 students and three teachers, and wounding of more than a dozen others at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School is the latest in a string of at least 63 school shootings since the Sandy Hook massacre in 2012. And whereas Floridians are still reeling from the other public mass shootings, including the Fort Lauderdale Airport in 2017, and the Pulse nightclub massacre in 2016, and whereas mass shootings at churches in Texas and South Carolina, and a concert in Nevada are still fresh in the minds and hearts of all Americans, and whereas more than 300 mass shootings occurred in 2017 alone, and whereas more than 21,000 Americans die by gun suicide every year, and approximately, approximately 90% of those who attempt suicide by gun will die, as opposed to more than 90% of those who attempt suicide by other methods, who will live and be unlikely to attempt, to attempt suicide again. And whereas almost 4,000, 4,000 children aged 0 to 17 years were killed or injured by guns in 2017, and more than 480 have been killed or injured by guns in 2018. And whereas women in America are 16 times more likely to be killed with a gun than women in other high-income countries, making this country the most dangerous in the developed world when it comes to gun violence against women. And whereas the presence of a gun in a domestic violence situation increases the likelihood of a woman dying fivefold, and whereas governments are not addressing gender-based violence adequately, which leads to it being underreported, and whereas racial disparities in gun violence are drastic, with more than half of all gun homicide victims being African-American, and whereas we, the residents of Gainesville, find ourselves weary of candlelight vigils, and have offered all the thoughts and prayers we can muster. And whereas, without action, the next mass shooting might happen as easily in our city as any other. And whereas this commission believes the data clearly indicate that gun violence is a significant and present public health and safety hazard, and that the tools to keep our residents safe have been denied our city. And whereas the enaction of Florida statute 790.33 preempt cities and counties from enacting any ordinance, rule, or regulation related to firearms. Now therefore be it resolved by the city commission of the City of Gainesville, Florida. Number one, that the commission demand for the health and safety of the people of our city, the Florida Legislature consider and pass emergency legislation that includes, but is not necessarily limited to, a ban on semi-automatic and assault rifles, swift and thorough background checks for all firearm purchases, disarming and prevention from arming those convicted under investigation and reasonably suspected of gendered violence, and review of mental health funding and appropriate measures to match access to gun ownership. Number two, failing to achieve number one above, that the commission demand the Florida Legislature repeal Florida statute 790.33 to allow the cities and counties of our state to enact ordinances, rules, and regulations to give us the legal tools to keep our residents safe from gun violence. Number three, that if current legislative session is not enough time to reconsider and enact either items one or two above, the governor establish a special session for this purpose. We do have a lot of people who are here to speak to this tonight. I hope you might perhaps consolidate some of your remarks. We have some alumni of Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, who are University of Florida students, with us this evening, and I would hope that they get an opportunity after the commission has had a little chance to talk as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayes Santos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I fully support your ordinance, and you said it well, well, resolution, resolution. We need to, was that, okay, thank you, I think. I'm gonna do that later. We need to take a stand. I strongly support the resolution, but I think we need to go further. I think there are other avenues that are, that are available. The students of Parkland and students around our state and country and our community are standing up, and they are putting themselves out there. And we need to follow their lead and stand with them as well. I was looking through the Florida statutes and state constitution, I came across, there's actually four different things I would like first take action on top of the resolution. Back in 2002, there was a blast charter review, or constitutional review commission allowed, and it passed, that counties can enact five-day waiting periods for all gun sales, including gun shows and things like that. So that would be the one thing for, I would like for us to do, is to write a letter to the county requesting them to enact a five-day waiting period for all gun sales, and enact criminal history record checks for all gun purchases. This is something that the Florida Constitution allows right now, and I would like for them to move on it as quickly as possible. Both Miami-Dade County and Palm Beach Counties already have, these ordinance already passed. Secondly, there is a, Weston, Florida, so we've, Commissioner Ward spoke about the preemption bill. It is probably one of the strictest preemption bills in the country, where if you are an elected official and you try to do any kind of gun control at a local level, other than this, one that's in the Florida Constitution. So I think that's something that we need to consider moving forward, is putting some, putting something on the, on the 2020 ballot to stop the preemption, allow more gun control. But that's a long way off. So the preemption for, for elected officials, if you enact gun control, it is responsible for all their own legal fees. If you get sued, we would get sued. There's a $5,000 fine, and the governor can remove us from office. Those are the things allowed under the bill. I think it's, parts of it unconstitutional, and I think we should take a stand, put ourselves out there, and do it, a couple of cities are moving towards that, including Coral Gables, which passed an ordinance for assault rifle, assault rifle ban on Tuesday. Tallahassee took action as well, to have their city attorney draft an ordinance to the same effect, but also doing high-capacity magazines and bump stocks, banning those as well in Tallahassee. The City of Weston, Florida, is, has filed a lawsuit against this preemption. I would like for us to have our city attorney contact the City of Weston and file as an ambiguous brief to be a part of that lawsuit. I would also like us to reach out to other cities, including Tallahassee and Coral Gables, and have our city attorney, I think it's gonna be more cities are gonna be doing the same thing, and working together to, to put together a coordinated effort across the state of Florida for cities and counties to say enough is enough. We need to take our stand, and I think this is the time to do it. I would also like for us to, to have, to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance that will, that would ban the sale of assault-style rifles, high-capacity ammunition magazines, and bump stocks in the City of Gainesville. I know it's not something that's easy for any of us to do, but I think it's something that we need to take a stand on. We at least need to start the process on it. I think Coral Gables did on Tuesday, I think Tallahassee's taken action. If we continue to take these steps, and all of these cities stand up and say enough is enough, and we're gonna put ourselves out there, I, I think that's a really, really strong message that we can send to the state of Florida, to the courts, that city after city after city, elected officials are putting themselves on the line, saying, we can't, we can't take this anymore. If the governor wants to remove 100 elected officials across the state of Florida, I don't think he will, but I think it's, I think we need to start moving in that direction, to just taking a stance. So to that, to that effect, I would like to move all four of those things, if you don't mind, the resolution as well.
Are you moving the resolution as, I'm sorry.
Good.
Are you moving the resolution as a resolution, or as?
Or if you want to draft a resolution, whatever you think, or, and a, and a letter as well.
As, I would prefer to have it as.
Move to draft a resolution, to the city attorney.
City attorney draft the resolution, but also as the mayor said, to write a letter on our behalf, with the spirit of it, to the legislature, or to the Speaker, the President of the Senate, as well as our local.
Delegation.
Delegation, that's the word, and the governor.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Shelley, before we have further comment, I think that we need you to weigh in on the legal ramifications of what Commissioner Hayes Santos just suggested, as it relates to the statute 790.33.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm actually gonna take a couple minutes here, because as a result of this item being placed on the agenda, my office has done considerable research, even up until I've been continuing the research while this meeting's been going on. So I'd like to give you, because Florida's gun laws are somewhat complex, and I'd like to sort of talk through with you what they derive from, and to check the legal challenges that have been raised, and how the courts have ruled, so that you have a very firm understanding of your, basically, the city's inability to do anything in this area unless the Legislature allows you to. So the statutory section that you all are talking about, 790.33, which states the preemption, that is a statute that exists, but what the Florida Supreme Court has found and ruled is, the right goes deeper than that. Article 1, Section 8A of the Florida Constitution gives the residents the right to bear and keep arms, except as regulated by law. And the Florida Supreme Court has held that, except as regulated by law, means as regulated by the Legislature, not by any local governments, not by any universities. So it's, the Constitution vests the Legislature with the exclusive right to regulate. So even if they were to repeal Section 790.33, that would not give you the authority to regulate. What would have to happen is the Legislature would have to affirmatively pass a statute saying, cities, counties, you can regulate these certain things. So what happens if a city or county tries to enact or enforce a local ordinance? Commissioner Hayes Santos has talked about one aspect, but first of all, what the statutes provide is that if you enact an ordinance in violation of this preemptive statute, which is very broad, that first of all, a court shall declare the ordinance invalid, and shall issue a permanent injunction stopping you from enforcing the ordinance. So that part's clear. You, there's literally no way around, and, and the courts have upheld that preemption. So there is no legal basis for arguing that that preemption is invalid. The second part is, beside a court setting aside that ordinance and declaring it invalid, as Commissioner Hayes Santos said, the statute provides very personal, and this is somewhat unusual, very personal liability on either any appointed or city official, whether that's an employee, an appointed person like myself, or elected person such as you. Any of us who act on behalf of a city to either be a part of the enactment or the enforcement of such an ordinance can be subject to up to a $5,000 fine. No public funds can be spent to defend or reimburse the defense costs of that public official. And then you can either be terminated, your employment terminated, if you're an employee, or the governor can remove elected officials from office. So those are the personal ramifications. As Commissioner Hayes Santos said, and actually in 2014, I don't know, I'll have to look. Well anyhow, there was a case brought that involved the City of Tallahassee, and Tallahassee was trying to get the court to rule those penalty provisions that are personal to the officials, that those were, that those were somehow in violation of law. And the court refused to rule on that issue at that time, because the court said, none of you Tallahas, you haven't violated this statute, you haven't been threatened with removal or a penalty, so the issue's not ripe for decision. So what's happened recently is Coral Gables seems to have, in the reports, and in reading their backup, and same with the City of Weston. What they want to do is, they want to get the issue ripe for decision. In other words, they want to enact something to get the court to decide that those penalties, personal against you all, against us, are somehow in violation of the law. The only problem with that is, even if a court declares that those penalty provisions are somehow unenforceable, it doesn't take away the preemption. You see what I'm saying? It, it would only take away that you couldn't be personally fined or sanctioned, but the court would still invalidate the ordinance. So I'm not sure the, the real effect of that, other than we all wouldn't personally be liable, but the ordinance would still go away and would still be unenforceable. And then the third thing that the statute provides is, the City of Gainesville, as a, as a legal entity, would have to pay all of the reasonable attorney's fees and costs of whomever brings suit, along with a contingency fee multiplier, which can be one and a half to three times the attorney's fees, and in addition to that, can have to pay damages up to $100,000. So that's sort of the lay of the land, it's very clear you all are preempted from any type of regulation. If you directed me to draft an ordinance, I would tell you I couldn't do it, because it's an unlawful ordinance, that part's very clear. So I just wanted you to have that full sort of lay of the land, and, and the legal ramifications of all of this.
And, Ms. Shelley, if we were to be removed from office, who would replace us?
Because the, this, this statute doesn't speak to that, and because your own charter provides, if you're suspended or otherwise, your seat becomes vacant, the city has to hold a special election to fill that seat.
Okay, so in the meantime, anywhere between zero and seven of us could. I mean, I mean, I mean, these are practical things we have to think about. This board could be vacated for a period of months, until there is a special election held.
And, and I will also add, so besides this statute, and even if, even if Weston and Coral Gables are successful in getting this, the personal penalties in this statute invalidated, there is another separate standalone statute that allows the governor to suspend from office any municipal official who he finds to have committed malfeasance or misfeasance, and those, those terms include taking action that you know to be unlawful or not allowed under Florida law. So even if this statute goes away, there's yet another statute that you can be pursued under.
Okay, thank you for those legal clarifications. Commissioner Gosden?
I was just wanting to know, Mr. Mayor, are we gonna hear from the public first?
Well, we're, I'll go through the lights, and then we'll hear from the public, yeah.
Okay.
I just wanna get questions answered before we move any further.
All right, what I wanted to add was, I'm in contact with State Representative Close Watson Jr., and he relayed to me that the governor has, is talking about raising the age limit to 21 for a AK-15, but it does not cover the AK-47, which is a lot more dangerous, and it does not cover weapons like street sweepers. Folks who are familiar with these kind of weapons, street sweepers are a lot more devastating than these other weapons, okay? And they have other weapons that would not be covered. And so, you know, Florida is the, is one of the very few states that has a law on the books that even if they know that a person is mentally ill, listen to me very closely here, if they know that a person is mentally ill, and they go out and they talk to him, they cannot take his weapons, or her weapons. And so basically, this is a revolving door that keeps revolving and getting bigger and worse. So I just wanted, you know, the audience to be aware of that before we start our conversation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had, I thought about, a couple of weeks ago, instead of a resolution, filing an ordinance. And I seconded, I'm still, still with you, but I, we have a lot of thinking to do. The reason I didn't is because exactly what Ms. Shelley said, it would immediately on passage become null and void. So it's, it's a lot of cost to the city. I'm not necessarily convinced that, that anybody actually gets removed, but they might, who knows? That's not the issue. The issue is, we would be doing it simply to test whether, what they would do as a personal penalty, because it would immediately be null and void. The real action that needs to be taken is that the Legislature needs to feel pressure to remove 790.33, or do the right thing. I'm, I'm actually personally convinced that local gun ordinances don't do a whole lot. Because if somebody can drive to another city, I won't be specific, but to another city, or to another county, or even to another state, and do exactly what you forbid them to do in your city, or county, or state, that it doesn't, it doesn't work. And we see that in Chicago, we see that in a variety of places. I, I would hate to put the city to, to all this trouble. I, I am very uncomfortable, it's one thing for us to, to make those decisions, entirely another to ask staff to do it, knowing the staff gets to bear the full brunt of it, just as we do. So if we were to do it, we would have to leave staff out of it, frankly. And even doing it doesn't actually do anything in the long run. It makes a statement, it makes a great statement, but it doesn't actually make law happen. So we have to consider that. In any case, we are not prepared to pass any ordinance tonight, so we're not in danger tonight. Would that be correct, Ms. Shelley?
That's correct. You get in no trouble for talking.
Right.
Well, that's.
Yet, yet.
No legal trouble.
Right, right. Yeah, they haven't taken away our First Amendment rights, yeah, just our, yeah, just our responsibilities, and, yeah. Okay, having put that out there, we'll, we'll have more to say, I think, after we hear from, for the public, and I do absolutely want, want to hear from y'all. And I will also say, I know there's some folks who have some things to say, they're gonna be, perhaps upsetting to some folks here, I would ask you to bear with, everybody has a right to say, to speak their piece. So if you hear something that is personally vile to you, remember you're, you're supporting the First Amendment by listening to it, so, thank you.
And we still have some commissioners here that want to talk, so we'll, I'll get to you shortly. Commissioner Ward?
Yeah, thank you, I really appreciate the motion, the conversation that you've opened up here, it's been really exciting, and a, and a wake-up way to hear how this conversation has reacted to the shooting that we haven't heard before, and really encouraged by that, and the, the legal advice that we're getting, you know, I appreciate that, and the outright, the, the, that it's just clearly not something that we can do legally, but wondering what the options would be. Because what we're really looking at here is, how do we get our voice to join up with the others from the position of city governance and leadership, to let individuals, not only in Tallahassee, but other communities around here, to be able to catch the wave, and, and the wave of change. I mean, it's, it's another situation, we had a lot of reaction to the politics last year, where people have gotten engaged in their civic duties, and, and that's been a really good thing. And this time around, I'm just so proud of the kids from Parkland to just, you know, the hashtag, you know, we've had enough, is, is a good hashtag. And, and we need to support it all the way, in whichever way we can. And I appreciate the, the comment, there's no trouble with talking, but what we wanna do is, is let people know there's a safe space, and there's a safe community, and that there are people in leadership that want to have a change to this. You know, the conversation about what do you need for hunting, if you wanna go out and, and be a hunter, but there are weapons that are not designed for deer, or, or any other creature, and, and as, as often said, these guns are designed for war, and for taking out the lives of many people on a sweeping. Commissioner Gosden, I don't know what the gun was that you were referring to, but as a sweeper, but I, yeah, the street sweeper, but I think what we're hearing too many times from individuals that have stood up with the NRA for a long, long time, is they're taking these little steps, you know, okay, we'll put a ban on bump stocks, and I'm like, what is that really gonna do? And we'll put a ban on one type of assault rifle, but not the others. I had a great conversation with my twin brother a couple days after the shooting, and he referred me to go look up the comedian Jeff Jefferies. And I would encourage everybody, if they don't, haven't seen him from Australia. When they had a mass shooting in Australia, I think in like 96 or something like that, the people of Australia said, you know what, we should get rid of the guns. And the people said, yeah, you know what, that's right. And what do we do here in America? We, we go through another civil war over needing to protect guns. And the gun, the protection for the Second Amendment is to protect us from going to war at one another. And when you have guns in every house, you're setting up for a battle, and, and you don't know who the good guys are. So I fully support us being able to organize as a community, to be able to say enough is enough. If only the bad people had guns, then eventually, you know, we'd see more and more bad people, we'd get more and more guns out of there, but this, this, these stories that have been coming up, where people are having 100 guns of different types in their own, in one house, as with the shooter in Las Vegas, enough is enough. And I'll fully support whatever this city can do to join conversations across the state and across the nation, so that this can stop.
Thank you. Commissioner Gillis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I came in with several point motion, and one of those was the resolution. And as you were speaking, Commissioner Ward, you said every single one of my points as to what I wanted to put into that resolution. That needs to be sent to the governor, the Legislature, the Florida Association of Cities as well, and Florida League of Cities. What's amazing about this debate is that for so long, there has been a coalition of people who have been fighting for gun reform in this state and in this country for the longest time. Where that has not existed, unfortunately, is in the power areas of Tallahassee, in the Speaker's office, in the Senate Majority's office. That's where the real change is going to come. And that is only going to come from this state enacting a wave of change and voting in new leaders up and down the ballot. When I think about what we can do here today, I came prepared. There are other legal avenues that we can pursue, and some of that was already discussed. There, there is, there is sort of this tapestry of evil in the laws right now, that at every single corner, you can repeal this, but there's another statute that prohibits you from doing that. And you would have to repeal so many statutes, that it almost seems to me that... And you would have to repeal so many statutes, um, that it almost seems to me that entering a lawsuit on one or two statutes doesn't get the job done. And even if you win, it's on the merits of that case, it doesn't apply to the whole state, which is why the law needs to change. Now, something else that can be done is with all of the cities and municipalities and localities, which have begun to talk about how we can make change, we can all band together to file what's called a declaratory judgment on a number of different statutes. We need grounds, and, and one of the, one of my motions was gonna be to ask staff to analyze the constitutionality of some of these statutes, and I didn't have to do that because she was already prepared to give us the, um, her, her legal opinion. And I will say that in the months that I've been here, our city attorney has never led us astray. And so I am in full support of most of the motion. We need to, if we do not join the other cities in filing a declaratory judgment against a number of statutes, it seems to me the only other way would be to have a legislature that changes the laws. That's how we're going to enact the change, because the ultimate goal of all of this is to actually change the laws. That is the ultimate goal. And the ordinance doesn't do that. It just doesn't. And what I want to see is I want to see this movement, and everyone here who's decided that they're going to take part in the democratic process, I'd like to see that movement succeed. And I'd like to see us put our efforts into action that will succeed. And so there's an election coming up in 2018. You should find out who you're voting for and what their position is on this, especially if they're running for the State House or the State Senate. We've got some governor's candidates also running. That is gonna be the most monumental change, because that is how you're gonna change all of the statutes that we need to challenge. And frankly, I would, I would love to see the, uh, thousands of municipalities in Florida come together to file that judgment on a number of statutes, uh, because that's where we're going to make the most change. And so I appreciate everything in the motion, um, but I would ask that that one last element be stricken. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I've got many strong and, and, um, deeply, uh, personal opinions on this issue. Uh, I'm one of those people that the President and other people want to arm. I can't imagine what my students would feel like if I was packing heat, um, every day as I taught them about the Constitution. But, um, I will reserve my comments, uh, both personal and, uh, and, uh, technical until I hear from you, because I think that's how this process, uh, needs to, to work. This is a civil discourse. This is what our founding guys gave us in order to work out our conflicts. There's a rea- reason that some issues are called wedge issues, they are meant to drive a division between our community, uh, and, and do so in a vicious and, and, uh, permanent way. I have said this many times in these chambers, Gainesville is better than that. We can show people a better way in how to have this discussion, even if we do disagree. Uh, and so that's what I'd ask of everybody, and what that means is discuss the issue, don't discuss the people. Because every person is a loving person that cares about their family and their community. We have differences of opinion on the issue, uh, and, and we want to hear about those differences, and, and we want to clearly understand, um, how you feel about this, uh, and how you believe that we should move forward, not just as a Gainesville community, but, but as part of a state and a nation. Uh, and, and so with that, uh, please feel free to introduce yourself, uh, for the record, and let us know what's on your mind, same rules, three minutes. Um, and we will, we'll take around a public comment, and then we'll come back to the commission, uh, for deliberation, uh, further deliberation on the motion, uh, and then see where we go from there. So whoever, uh, yeah. Welcome, both of you.
Hi, um, my name is Emily Weingarten, and I'm a freshman from the University of Florida, but I'm also proud to be a part of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas class of 2017, I just graduated from there. And I stand before all of you today in honor of the 17 innocent victims that lost their lives due to a tragedy that could have been prevented, my brave teachers who put their students' lives before their own, my friends who are currently suffering from PTSD, the alumni who have chosen to not be silent, and my community who has come together to be positive, passionate, and proud, not only to be an eagle, eagle, but to be a catalyst of change. For me, this doesn't hit too close to home, this is my home. I'm so thankful that the city of Gainesville is coming together over an issue that personally means so much to me and so many others, and I look forward to seeing definitive results coming out of meetings such as this one. I know, like, as you all are talking about, that this is so difficult and hearing about all the different statutes, but I, please, I ask you to not give up on this mov- this movement, even if current legislative proposals don't seem to solve all the problems, because every step in the right direction will stimulate conversations for those that do, and I'm telling you, it really means everything to hear you guys talk about this. Um, I'd originally written some stuff on what the city of Weston is doing, but I understand that it is a very complicated issue, but please, again, I really appreciate looking into everything. We are all living through a powerful time in history, a time where our voices, no matter how old we are, as proven by many of the students in my high school, can be transformed into action. It upsets me to hear that the Florida Legislature just passed measures to encourage school districts to have teachers carry guns, because I've spoken with many of my teachers, and they do not want to carry guns, they want to teach their students, they're not policemen, that's not their job. Um, and to me, this isn't even a political issue, I think this is something that we need to come together over, and this is about people's lives. And we need to put those lives before weapons that were literally designed for war. The shooter was only 19, was able to purchase a gun legally, this needs to change. The shooter was able to murder 17 individuals and injure many others, including my neighbor, who just got home from the hospital, in under seven minutes using a single weapon, this needs to change. The shooter had such a troubled past and was able to slip through a background check, this needs to change. The road to gun reform will not be easy, nor a quick one, but it will quite literally have life, life-changing effects. Above the exit to my school with the red gates reads a quote, "Be the change you wish to see in the world." Now more than ever, does a saying inspire me to elicit change? Never again should a parent have to send their schoo- their kid to school, only to realize they'll never see them again. Never again should the sound of bells be transformed to gunshots. Never again should anyone send heartbreaking texts, fearing it will be their last chance to say, "Thank you, I love you." Never again should anyone have to see their high school, their safe place, their home, look like a war zone. Never again should students have to witness a nightmare only to realize it's their reality. Never again will this be reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Hello, my name is Zachary Azu. I am a current UF sophomore and Marjory Stoneman Douglas alumni, class of 2016. And I'd like to first start off by saying, thank you for considering this resolution and pushing this possible legislation towards Tallahassee, and I sincerely appreciate the risk that all you individuals are currently considering taking. But I do want to emphasize that it is extremely important that you do take this risk, and you're here to help change the country and serve the American people. Um, 'cause Parkland is one of the safest cities in the country, and if this kind of travesty can happen to Marjory Stoneman Douglas, it can literally happen to any community out there, including Gainesville. And as Commissioner Austin said, uh, I don't, I also don't believe that a single gun ban is gonna take care of things, I think that there needs to be a blanket standard gun control protocol. I'm not exactly sure of logistics of that currently, but I believe with the, the current pushes that we're making right now in our society as a whole, we're gonna reach that one day. But I do want to greatly emphasize that this isn't an issue of red or blue. Uh, this is an issue of one of my best friends never being able to hug his little sister again. This is an issue of my previous high school football coach, Aaron Feis, never getting the opportunity to raise his four-year-old daughter. And this is an issue of making sure that a travesty like Marjory Stoneman Douglas's never happens to your community, never happens to your children, and never happens to any American ever again. We have a group of around 30 UF Douglas alumni, including Emily, and we are working our hardest to make sure that we, as Gators, are able to make our influence heard around the world. And we will be in DC on Washington, March 24th, marching for our lives. We are the best school in the country, we are some of the best individuals out there to make sure that when these kids go to school, they don't fear to never see home again. I want everyone to make sure that they realize that this is a personal issue for everyone. Let it be known that our influence has the power to change the world. We, as Douglas alum, will fight tooth and nail to make sure Parkland is the last mass shooting in American history, and I hope that the city of Gainesville is behind us as well. One last thing, I just want everyone to know that although we are grieving and thoughts and prayers are appreciated to a certain extent, it means nothing at this point. All we can ask for is action and the correct process to make the due change necessary to make America truly the greatest country in the world. And with, on that note, I just want to say, trauma is temporary, influence is forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here with us tonight. Anybody else want to speak on this motion? You're welcome.
I'm Pat Abbott, and I really appreciate that you all are talking about this. I really, and I really appreciate the risk that you are taking. Um, I feel like we have to prioritize. Uh, it's a big multifactorial problem. Certainly, there's a mental health issue, there's background checks, there's availability of guns, and you, and I feel like, as I hear the news, that we're nibbling around the edges. You know, we're accepting these little, uh, things that are not adequate. My personal feeling is that we should go for banning assault-type weapons, and I come to it from two places. I come to it as the mother of a active-duty military who has been in Yemen, who's been in Afghanistan, and a couple of weeks from now will be in the Middle East again. And he has trained extensively with just these type of weapons, and he, he was telling me how they handle them and, and what they can do. And he says, "They are weapons of war. They are weapons of war. There is no place in civilian society, and certainly in schools, for assault-type weapons." So that's his perspective. I'm a physician, and I have read many, many CT scans of people who have gunshot wounds and blunt trauma. And I was flabbergasted by Dr. Heather Shear's description. Uh, she said she'd never seen a CT like this before, and let me just read it to you, how, how she describes it. It's, the liver looked like an overripe melon smashed by a sledgehammer with extensive bleeding, and it was substantiated in the OR. This was a fatal injury to one of the children. And it, it doesn't look like what we see with handgun, this, this is, is, this is an injury of war. This is not a schoolhouse, you know, falling off the jungle gym. This is an injury of war. And if we, I mean, we would not allow people to have grenade launchers, so why do we let them have, uh, assault weapons and weapons that have machines that can just discharge these like that? So that's my, that's my personal feeling. I was thinking, I, I feel like we should ban, they should be banned, and I would be, I, I like to be philanthropic, I would be a donor for a buyback. You know, if you had a buyback program, and I was thinking, as you said, they can't do anything, could a bunch of interested citizens say, "We're gonna have one heck of a buyback of assault weapons in Gainesville," and that we support it? You know, we raise the money and we figure out a, and we buy back assault weapons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kirsten Webster. Um, I'll start by saying I'm not a legal scholar, and I am certainly not an expert on firearms, but what I am is a graduate from Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, as class of 2014. Um, more importantly, I'm the older sister of a now terrified 17-year-old senior at Marjory Stoneman Douglas. Um, I don't have a beautiful speech prepared for you, but I would just like to point out something a little bit specific about the possibility of legal reform. I think everything that you've put forth in your resolution is very important, and I 100% back you on that. I also think it's important that part of, um, the legal reform that may or may not come out of this is that, I mean, people always say, see something, say something. And I, um, can personally attest to the fact that people saw something and people said something, including my sister, and her friends, and her classmates, her teachers, the community, the shooter's neighbors. Um, and part of the problem, from what I've heard, is that people were not empowered to do anything about it when they were giving, given this information, and I don't mean that they were weak-willed and they sat down and did nothing, I mean legally, they were not empowered to do anything about it. There's obviously a huge problem when there have been 40-some-odd police calls from a home, and there have literally been, uh, Facebook posts apparently, or Instagram posts, that neighbors called the police about where this boy said that he was going to shoot up the school. And there is a huge problem when someone can report that to a police officer and nothing happens, and the actions that were spelled out on social media came to fruition, and people are dead. And I'm upset, and something needs to be done. And I don't have anything more specific to say about that, but I would like to say that I am really proud of my community here in Gainesville for coming together and having this conversation. I thank you all for being so brave and putting together this resolution and, you know, having this scary, potentially illegal conversation. But I just wanted to say that I encourage you, and I implore you all, to act on this with courage, and to act on it as if the lives of your loved ones and the young people in your life depend on it, because they do.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, for taking up this issue. My name is Ally Coven, I'm here to support, uh, this resolution. When I say this issue hits too close to home, I did grow up a couple miles away from Marjory Stoneman Douglas, and I can't imagine what you all are going through. Um, I would often go there after school for academic competitions. Uh, I was on the phone with my little sister that day, trying to assure her that her childhood friends were not murdered in their classrooms. Um, that broke my heart. No students should feel afraid for their lives to go to school, no sister, sisters should have to make that phone call, no family should ever have to receive that tragic news, and no community should experience the devastation, loss, and rage that ours has. What happened in Parkland really feels like it was so avoidable. There was nothing well-regulated about a teenager with a history of violent behavior, legally purchasing an AR-15 and taking 17 lives. Currently, our laws are ineffective. We need a ban on assault weapons, they're not used for hunting, they're used for maiming and killing. We need much more robust, universal background checks, we need a system of training and licensing and registration to ensure responsible firearm ownership. Uh, we need to enforce five-day waiting periods for gun sales. These cooling-off laws help save lives by reducing spur-of-the-moment gun violence and providing time to complete the aforementioned background checks. These are the basic changes we need to establish a well-regulated firearm system. Uh, thank you to Commissioners Ward and Hey Santos for putting these together. I understand that your guys' hands are relatively tied, but I hope someone in Tallahassee is listening. I know I'm tired of living in a country whose response to the slaughtering of innocent citizens is inaction, and it really is time for change, um, and I'm hopeful, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, um, my name's Roxanne Palmer, I'm a Gainesville resident, but I grew up in Orange County, California, which saw its worst mass shooting seven years ago at a hair salon in Seal Beach, California. One of my high school classmates lost his mother, and seven other families lost, uh, loved ones as well. And I want to thank you, Commissioner Ward, for especially calling out, um, domestic violence in your resolution, um, because the perpetrator in the incident that happened in my hometown was the ex-husband of my classmate's mother. And, um, I think it, it illustrates a particular kind of loophole that needs to be solved in the future. Um, this man, um, actually had a restraining order put upon him that also included a prohibition against gun ownership, but it was a temporary restraining order, and it expired, um, and so the guns that he used to murder, um, eight people in my community, uh, were legally owned. And so the guns that he used to murder eight people in my community were legally owned. And you can see a lot of other similar loopholes in the federal Laughtonburg Amendment. There's something called the boyfriend loophole, where prohibitions on gun ownership for domestic violence will, like, only be enacted if the domestic violence is perpetrated against someone that the person lives with or has children with. And so you see a lot of cases where someone commits domestic violence against a woman, but because he's just her boyfriend and not her husband, he's still able to get a gun and kill her and her children often later. So, again, thank you so much for taking up this issue, and obviously, this is a whole lot of threads in this tapestry of evil to start pulling on. I'm also, I'm, I'm a socialist, and so I'm mindful of the fact that whatever gun control measures that we pursue that rely on our criminal justice system are going to be somewhat asymmetrically applied. So that is something also to think about going forward. Who is, you know, arrested for domestic violence? Who has more strict measures put upon them? And just something that we all need to be mindful about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is John Unsaddle, and I'm just a concerned citizen. In addition, I, before I speak more, I'd just like to echo that I support what everyone for me has said. And I like to come at it from another angle or another thread in the tapestry of evil, as we're saying. And I'd like to call for the Commission to do what they can to support the Florida teachers who have spoken out about the fact that the Florida Teachers Pension Fund currently has over forty-one thousand shares invested in American Outdoor Brands Company, as well as shares in Sturman-Rodger, Vista Outdoor, and Allencore. That information can be found in a Tampa Bay Times article by Kirby Wilson and an AP article that appeared in ABC News on February 21st. And the common argument is that we can't replace those shares because pensions have a financial duty to return all investment for the pension. But as James Cox of Harris Financial Group said, that the negative PR is worse, is worse than being done what will happen to the portfolio if you were to liquidate those positions that we, the pension fund currently has in the manufacturers and distributors of guns. And to prove that this kind of thing can be successful, the California State Teachers' Retirement System and California Public Employees Retirement System divested from Sturman-Rodger's and Smith &amp; Wesson after the Sandy Hook tragedy. So I would just, again, like to say that if there's a regulation or a resolution, ordinance, or something you can do to pressure the state legislature into divesting from the gun companies who profit from fear and violence, that would be great. And going after the gun companies themselves is a way to make sure that the laws are not applied biased based on race or other things. Historically, gun and other laws have been asymmetrically applied, different people of different races and genders. A classic example is the Black Panthers in California. They passed, they removed the open carry law because they were feeling threatened. And I just really want to make sure that the gun control that we pass does not affect one members of our community more so than others, and I think going after the companies would be a good place to start.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Poe, City Commissioners. I'm Alicia McGruder. I am running for Florida State Senate. I support Commissioner Ward's proposed resolution, and I do appreciate that our city commission is having this conversation tonight, because I would, I appreciate that you're standing up to these unconstitutional preemption laws, because you're standing up for our kids, our schools, our teachers, and everybody in our community. We, as a community, have the fundamental right to worship, to work, to play without the fear of being shot by a domestic terrorist. I also wanted to mention that I am a member of Moms Demand Action, and I want to personally applaud the group here, because they are super organizers. They're doing very good work, and they never cease working, so thank you for all the good work you're doing. I also wanted to mention that I'm a former public school teacher. My mother teaches at Howard Bishop Middle School. She's about five foot four, and I enjoy the friendship of a multitude of teachers in this district. And let me say, arming teachers is a new level of absurdity and yet another attack on our schools, and an NRA poison pill, as coined by Representative Carlos Guillermo Smith, that we will not swallow. So I just wanted to say that I support you all in your effort to take a stand, and I think it's amazing that we are all here tonight, and especially hearing from the young voices. Unfortunately, if you've noticed, most of the people affected by these tragedies are younger people, because this is something that's happening to our upcoming generation. So thank you.
Thank you.
So I really appreciated Jonathan's comments about fiduciary responsibility, because what I anticipate is, what I hope for my grandchildren, which are numerous around the world, we have one small world to live on, we have to start taking care of each other. And what Jonathan said is really pertinent, because it is something that we can do without penalty and with actually fiduciary responsibility. Our fiduciary responsibility is to look to the future and to recognize that either the country will end, or we will take it back from the NRA and the other corporate donor, owners of our government. And when we do that, we will set laws which will devalue the people who are funding the NRA, the arms merchants. And it is our responsibility as investors in the system of our government, of our country, which is the stock market, that we divest from these things, as well as from fossil fuels and things that Marina Smurling talks to so eloquently and so consistently. We will drive the NRA out of business. We will make the arms merchants suffer for the depredations against us. And referring back to the young man from Parkland who spoke second in the meeting, it is not a red or a blue thing, because the corruption of the government is in both parties. The most pertinent example, yesterday, I got direction from the Democratic Congressional Campaign Committee that I should not be talking about legislation relating to guns. I should be talking about prayers and thoughts. Well, I am not following their direction. I am speaking to the point that we will take over the Democratic Party and remake it in the image that our children shall survive in. And I really, really am moved and humbled. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Benji Langford. I'm running for Lincoln Best Yard. And what I want to say about the guns is, I don't know if you guys remember, but when the drug war started, is when a lot of people started getting armed. And it got so bad, when Nancy Reagan announced that, that that's when gangs started having guns and stuff. Then, and then that's when it was lucrative for people to make guns and sell guns. There's also bullets. I don't know what they're doing about bullets, but you can't kill somebody without a bullet, you know, if that's something to target, too. I know it doesn't with this one. But, yeah, nobody needs an assault rifle to collect or for anything, you know? We leave our guns in other countries when we fight, they can have them. Personally, Gainesville is kind of beefed up. It used to not be so scary with guns and stuff, I think, in our age when we did. And the police have had to beef up, too, you know, to protect themselves against that, you know, especially since the Hollywood one, when everybody got shot, and they had So I think it's the right way to do it, but I think we started it as a poor thing, arresting people for marijuana. Just take some of that money that the government's making off all the people they arrested. Now they're selling marijuana and making money. Just put that into gun reform or something. Let's not let them make money off of all those people they've arrested just for selling the same thing that they're doing now. So where that money goes, I don't know. And Reagan also shut down a lot of mental places. Some mental places in guns just don't, don't work together. So he shut all of them down so nobody had, "Hey, I'm having problems," you know? You can't say that. But, you know, a lot of people, work they're doing now, they have places to talk to people if there's trouble they're feeling or, you know, because they're, they're kids, you know? How somebody gets assault weapons is ridiculous. And someone said, "Another civil war," or something over here, and who's gonna win? Well, it's gonna be the people with the guns, if it boils down to that, you know? And it could, you know? So people feel like they have to arm themselves in case that happens. You put a trigger thing on it, it's only one person can fire. There's just so many things that we can do that we're not doing.
Thank you, Mr. Langford.
You're welcome. It's going up.
Yeah, yeah. Means it went, went round the horn there for you. Welcome.
Thanks. Hello, everybody. Thanks for giving us, you know, a chance to hear what we have to say, and thanks for staying and being willing to, you know, consider breaking the law and being game changers and joining up with Coral Gables and Weston. And I just want to say, you know, I don't have children. Columbine happened my first year of college, and I, I remember what I was wearing that day, watching that on the television and being like, that was just, it was crazy. And then a couple of years later, 9/11 happened, and, and like, all of a sudden, the violence is just keep, it keeps growing and growing and growing and getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And my mom is a teacher at GHS here locally, and she's sixty-two years old, practically blind, and walks, goes around school in an electric scooter chair, and she's a beast. Like, I don't know what she'll do when she stops working, but her classroom, especially, is just, just recently, she has to keep the windows blind because of where she's located. There's access, the public people can walk by it or something. So the kids can't see outside, it's dark in there, it's dismal. She teaches ESC intensive reading schools, a sanctuary for most of her children, and they're upset and scared. And the conversations that, and interactions that are happening, from what I hear from her experience as a teacher, the children that are there today are so completely different than high school was for me. I walk, I remember going to high school, you follow the rules, because it was just an institution where there was, there was like law and order, and there was respect and dignity, and, and it was a safe place. And I can't imagine, you know, when you're having drills for, for armed shooters and part of the problem, and I, I didn't see a lot of the fighting and, and all of that kind of stuff that happens now. Like, my mom had a table thrown at her at the beginning of the year in 2016, and the principal would not let her press charges against the child because of something that has to do with the administration or whatever. There, there's, there's, there has to be a way to back teachers so you can say something when you see something, like, do something. And behavior's out of control, and, and people, you know, parents have an ability to sue if you say the wrong thing about their child. There's just, as times have become more modern, it seems like we've been so focused on precedent and how things are and how things used to be, when our forefathers even had the foresight to say, "It's our duty to amend our laws and our governments to match the, the modern needs of society."
Thank you, Ms. Wood.
And it's, uh, it's timely that we do that. So that's all I have to say. Thanks for all that you do.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Marnie Wiss. I did not come here intending to speak at all, but I'm the mother of a fourteen-year-old boy in town, and though I have always been heartbroken by gun violence before, there was something about this being so close and being kids of his age at schools, like the ones that he's going to, that really got me. And then the students that have now left, I've never been inspired, I don't think, by anything as much as I have been by what the kids are doing. And I think they're putting us all to shame. Sorry. Sorry. I'm gonna take some of my time to cry. I want to thank you all for what you're doing. Listening to you struggle with what to do as a city, I realize how, it just makes me realize again how incredibly frustrating it is and how our hands are tied. And so I, a couple of things occurred to me while I was listening. One thing that, perhaps, an angle you could take, is that students in town are a part of organizing these walkouts from school. I'm sure you all have heard of those, to protest and to ask for change. I don't know if there's a way that the city commission could work with the school board to somehow support the local, excuse me, the local students. I'm not sure what that would look like, but it would be lovely. They're all a little scared right now that they're going to be punished, and it will go down in their permanent record and be a bad mark, and we should really be supporting them and how brave they are in taking control of leading this country and taking us in the right direction. So I was wondering if there was something you might think of in that direction. And then I was also wondering if something could be added. I love the idea of a resolution and a letter to the legislature, and was wondering if you could add something to that about not arming teachers, which is starting to happen. I mean, Putnam County voted to do, do that, I think, with the assumption that the legislature is about to pass something that will allow them to do that. So if, if that could be added into that letter, I'm not sure that I want my child to go to school in a state that is allowing the educational staff to be armed. And I, I think most of us are appalled by it, and I think most rational gun owners are also probably appalled by it. I think the NRA has scared a lot of people that this is a slippery slope, and I'd like us to start trying to prove that it isn't, and there are rational things we can do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I've already introduced myself, but I know personally five people.
If you'd introduce yourself again for a, for a clerk.
Christina Logan. I'm a music director at Holy Faith Catholic Church, and I'm a music teacher at Brentwood School, and I've taught at St. Patrick's. I personally know five people, a family, I'm sorry, a family of six here in Gainesville, who lost a family member to, to this terrible, terrible killing. And in their name, I want to come here and support this resolution, and thank you and support all of you for being so courageous. Carmen Shentrip would have become eighteen two days after she was killed, and she had been accepted to U of F. She was a National Merit Scholar. Her family, who lives here in Gainesville, were very hopeful that she would come here and join their daughter in going to be a Gator. So this hits very, very close to home for that reason. So I thank you, thank you very, very much, in their name, for doing something to stop this. The other thing I want to say is, as a teacher, the most important power I have as a teacher is trust. I can't teach, I can't get classroom order, I can't get any kind of cooperation or effectiveness if I don't have the trust of my students. I can't imagine what guns in the hands of teachers would do for the relationship between educators and students. The students would have to know who has the guns. How will they have the same relationship with the other teachers, the same teachers with their students? And how do I get a student to trust me like they do now to tell me the things that are hurting them, frightening them, harming them at home, if I'm somebody who holds a gun? I just don't, I don't understand it. It seems beyond absurd to me. It seems beyond absurd to me. And then finally, I, I've come over the years to realize that this isn't just NRA money or right versus left or people who like to hunt, which I know people who have a conceal and carry permit, I know people who like to hunt. What really seems to kind of fuel the bottom line here is a small minority of people who feel paranoid and afraid enough of their own government that they believe that we should all be able to arm ourselves against a government. That's what it seems like when you keep pushing. And I don't know of a greater slippery slope than that because we couldn't possibly have enough arms to protect ourselves. I don't understand that. So I think we should have a little time on our slippery slope, which is getting ourselves to have a more civilized society. Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Harold Save. See something, say something. 130 million indigenous people murdered, exterminated in the American Holocaust of the, of the West in our pursuit of manifest destiny at the point of a gun. That's the American Holocaust. I'm here today to kind of give another side of the story. And, and I like what the initiative is here for looking for justice for the firearm issue. But we should have an educated conversation about that. And we need to know, if we could have the overhead here, that we have a, that we have good news. Five PhD authors have given us the evidence that nobody died at Sandy Hook. So this is the good news, nobody died at Sandy Hook. And I've emailed all of you with a, a link to the first edition of this book, which should be read. Now I see, I sense a little intolerance, Mr. Mayor, of people leaving the room.
You have a right to freely speak, they have a right to not listen to you.
That's right. But there's a little intolerance in not listening to the other side of the story.
There's no other side to this, this is fabricated.
I'm still, I'm still here, Mr. Mayor, to enlighten the conversation with what I know. Steve, Dr. Steve Pacinic recently posted his finding on the Sandy Hook and Marjorie Jones Douglas shooting. And there, as a result of government-sponsored psychological operations. Now this doesn't mean that nobody died at Marjorie Stoneman Douglas. Psyops and false flags are part of what our American intelligence system does. Dr. Pacinic served in the federal government under US, for US presidents. And he was the first psychiatrist to ever have served as Deputy Assistant Secretary of State. As one of the world's most foremost experienced international crisis managers and hostage negotiators, Dr. Pacinic is eminently qualified to know when the deep state intelligence spooks have launched a psychological operation while organizing full cooperation of legacy front media and sensational TV news in order to manipulate public opinion with a false narrative. And the evidence shows that that's what's been happening here. We have three students whose identities were used during the 2012 Sandy Hook incident who have attorneys now.
Your time has expired, please, please.
Who are trying, in conclusion, in conclusion.
Mr. Save, your, your time has expired, thank you for your comments.
Yeah, they're, they're trying to.
Mr. Save, your time has expired, thank you for your comments.
Yeah, but you, you've given other people a little extended time to.
Everybody has.
I've seen something, I'm gonna say something.
Everybody has honored the clock in this conversation.
You have my, you have my email.
Thank, we have your.
Please research it and give what you need to, to the attorney.
Next speaker, please.
If you have anybody, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, if anybody has any doubt about what happened, I encourage you to go and visit the graves of the children who were buried because of inaction on gun, on gun safety. There is no other side to this story. There is no false narrative about deaths. The only false narrative is being pushed by the NRA, Wayne LaPierre, Marion Hammer, and the blood money they have passed out to politicians up and down Florida. I encourage all of you to pass this resolution, spite the NRA, stand in support of our kids, and keep guns out of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker? Anybody else want to speak? Okay, we'll close this section of, of, comment on the motion. Okay, so I have not given my comments yet before, you know, everybody goes around a second time. It is important that we take meaningful action. That includes here locally as well as how we can support efforts on a state and most importantly, federal level. There are things we can do right here in Gainesville. And, and one of our speakers mentioned one that I think should be at the top of our list of priorities, and that is divestment from any, any company that deals in the machinery of death. We, we have already challenged our staff to look at a divestment approach to our pension fund. And I, I cannot think of any one area that we should be more concerned about not profiting off of than companies that do deal in the machinery of death. That is one tangible step that we can take. I also concur with authorizing the city attorney to join in any amicus briefs that, that would support any challenges to these laws at the state level. What I, what I have observed from their state conversation and in today, more recently, our federal conversation is some very minor steps that are being taken merely to appease the public, hoping this blows over and we forget about it. I have no opposition to raising the legal age to 21. It will do almost nothing to prevent gun deaths. Almost all incidents involving the use of a firearm are people over the age of 21. I have no opposition to banning bump stocks. They will do little to prevent gun deaths. Meaningful change will include a complete ban on weapons that are meant only for mass destruction. And that can only happen at our state or local level. I mean, sorry, state or, or national level. I agree with everything in the motion save author, or asking that our city attorney draft an ordinance. I have no problem being removed from my position and paying $5,000 if it would mean no more people would die from gun deaths. Quite frankly, there are days that I would welcome it. Today is not one of those. I know that there are most days my wife would welcome it. I don't think Gainesville is better served if the seven of us are removed from office. I don't think that that does our community any good. I think we need people like the ones sitting on the left and right of me, fighting for our community and fighting for what our city knows to be our values. But I will not put our city employees in the position of losing their jobs, of getting disbarred. I will not ask our police officers to knowingly break the law, lose their job and lose their pension. That, that, the implication of us attempting to pass an ordinance that would have immediately no effect and jeopardizing the careers and families of the people who work so hard to serve our community serves no purpose. I think that it will be interesting to watch as the cities move through this legal process. I, I'm not optimistic about their chances. And that brings me to what I believe is the only way that we get meaningful change, which is to only support people that oppose the gun lobby and strongly work against people who support it. We need to look at people's NRA grade. If they have an F, that is who we should put all our time and treasure towards. If they have a D, we should tell them to keep working hard and one day they'll achieve an F rating and we'll be supportive of them. We need wholesale change at our state and federal level. And this needs to be the issue, that people who care about the livelihood, the safety of our children rally around. We need to ask our elected officials who are taking these half measures right now, why didn't they do it after Sandy Hook? Why not after Pulse? Why did it take until Parkland? That's an important question for them to answer. Because I think there's a lot of latent bias embedded in the answer that they would have to that question. I also will not be the sucker who falls prey to this false analogy between mental health and gun violence. We know that less than 4% of all gun violence is committed by people that have mental health issues. But don't get me wrong, I will fully take advantage of the situation. If they want to put a lot more money towards mental health treatment, by all means, let's do it. But let's not tie it or equate it to gun violence. There is not a link between the two. In fact, people who have mental health issues are much more likely to be victims of gun violence than they are to be perpetrators of gun violence. And so Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Hey Santos, I thank you for the thoughtful work you've put into this. I fully support drafting a letter to our colleagues at the county, asking them to move forward with the five-day waiting period and background check elements that they are empowered by the state constitution to enact. I fully support joining any amicus briefs, including those with Weston and Coral Gables. I fully support asking the attorney to draft a resolution and in the meantime, me drafting a letter to send to our legislative delegation with the elements of that resolution. And I fully support reaching out to other cities to, to form a network of unified opposition to the current state of gun laws and, and ways that we may move forward in the future. This is going to be a long fight. The NRA has worked on, quite frankly, an incredibly successful strategy over decades to get us to where we are today. The difference is we now have our nation's youth on our side. And these are the children that I teach every day. And I have pleaded with them for going on 20 years now to get involved, to get active, to get engaged, and it's been a tough sell. I think many things are important. So do they, they just don't happen to be the same things as, as me. And I don't blame them. When I was 16, 17, 18, we were, Benji, we were playing Star Wars. Maybe not by 18, I still do too, I still do too. But everything changed at Parkland. And, and it's, it's not a regional movement, it's not a statewide movement, it's a national movement that these young people have started. And I'm happy to follow them. I'm happy that they're taking over the mantle of leadership. And I'm happy to, to be the one that follows them. Because I know that they're headed to a much different United States of America than the one I grew up in. And so, you know, I think these are meaningful steps that we can take right now. But the real work is between today and November, when we get to send a very clear message to our state leaders of what kind of government we want to see in Tallahassee. And that's where the lasting and meaningful change will, will occur. So with that, we'll go back to the commission. We do have a motion on the floor. I will tell you that I am going to divide the motion, pull out the authorization or the request for the attorney to draft an ordinance and separate that part. I, I didn't hear any opposition to the other elements of the motion. And I think if, if the maker of the motion would be willing to add the modification about, what have our speakers spoke, sorry? Oh, yeah, arming teachers, right. I don't think that was in, so, and I, I'm friends with lots of teachers. They're good people. Probably not the best folks to have a loaded weapon on their person at any given time. Okay, so with that, we'll go to Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to all of you who are here and to those of you who may be watching or listening at home who have been here. Especially thank you to the young people who are alumni of Marjorie Stoneman Douglas. I understand that they were headed to Parkland tonight and that's one of the reasons that they're left. I grew up around guns. I'm very comfortable with guns. Guns have a purpose. I've shot shotguns and pistols and rifles and all sorts of things. I've never shot a, an assault rifle because frankly, I never wanted to, I didn't really see the point. I learned to shoot guns, to do target practice, to, to hunt occasionally. I wasn't much of a hunter, but I suppose I didn't like it because I wasn't very good at it. But I'm comfortable with guns. There's a lot of power when you hold the gun and then you point it and you squeeze the trigger and boom, you make thunder and something happens 100 feet away. That's tremendous feeling of power. About 25 or 30 years ago, I decided that that was more power than anybody ought to hold in their hands, just as a personal decision. And that's why I don't own a firearm. I will tell you that over the years, my father and I have had lots of disagreements about lots of things and I've been able to bring him over to, to what I consider the correct side of just about all those things. Dad's an FDR, LBJ Democrat like me, that's where I learned it, I guess. But the most difficult conversations he and I have ever had have been about guns. So I will tell you, I have heard every single argument for keeping guns. And I think they're all wrong. I think they're all wrong. I've had pretty strong opinions about this for a long time. I will tell you that one day in December of 2014, I, 2012, sorry, I went home for lunch and turned on TV just to see what was going on in the world and found out that some children the same age as my daughter had been massacred at Sandy Hook Elementary. And I'm sorry that, that you're shaking your head there, Mr. Save. I, I don't want to, I don't want to hear it.
At least I don't want to be personal with you.
Fair enough. You can count on that from now on, sir.
Okay.
You can count on that from now on.
We, we do not need to engage each other.
You're right, you're right. Since then, I've been wondering why everybody else wasn't on board with this. What in God's name makes anybody think it's a good idea to let these things continue to be sold? I'm horrified at what continues to happen over and over and over and over again, including a couple of weeks ago at Parkland. But I'm glad that everybody else is slowly getting on the train. The number of gun owners in America is significantly lower than it was in the 1970s. Back then, there were about half of Americans owned guns. Fewer than a third of Americans own guns right now. A very small percentage of Americans own most of the guns. It's perfectly legal right now to buy very efficient killing machines and that needs to stop. If we can be a part of that, then we need to be a part of that. I'm a firm believer in thoughts and prayers. I'm a believer. But I also believe in the African proverb that says, when you pray, move your feet. I take that to mean prayer is a good thing, but you gotta actually do something. You can't just fold your hands and say, gosh, I hope something great happens, because it won't, you have to do the work. We're here to do the work. You all are here to do the work with us. This is going to be a very long fight, as, as the mayor said, this is 15 rounds, we're in probably round one or two. I am generally pretty excited to, to jump out there and then be right out in front of, of things. But I'm not able to support this most, the, the part of the motion that includes an ordinance because I feel like I need to be in all 15 rounds of this fight. And I want you to be there with me. And I want all of you to be there with me in this fight. And if we take ourselves out of the ring, there's less that we can do. And if we take ourselves out of the ring, there's less that we can do. The governor will appoint some people to sit in these seats until we have an election that won't believe the things that we are professing. And I'm not going to be a part of that. I'm going to do everything I can as a dad to keep my children safe. And I believe that one of the things that makes them unsafe are the gun laws that are currently out there, the passive gun laws that currently exist in this nation. That's where my motivation is coming from. I believe every time my kids go to school, I worry about turning on the news or getting an email from GPD about what might have happened. Every single day since Sandy Hook, I've had that feeling. Every day. I'm tired of it. So tired of it. I appreciate you all listening and I'm committed to doing whatever it is we have to do that will get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Asantos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Ward, for your words, words. Thank you all for coming. Thank you to the Parkland students, our student alumni. I do strongly still support the ordinance, an ordinance to ban assault rifles, high-capacity magazines and gun stocks. I'm very comfortable with guns too. I've shot AK-47s, AR-15, tons of different handguns, whatever, 22, all, all different kinds. And assault rifles, they're weapons of war. I mean, that's what they're designed to do. When you have them in your hands, that's the feeling that comes from them. And they should not be sold. I think we should take a stance. If we were removed from office, which I don't think would happen because I think that's unconstitutional, the governor wouldn't appoint us though. It would be done locally through our own charter. I think us taking a stand on this inspires other cities to do the same and pushes the movement going forward. So I, I will still strongly support the ordinance and I will support all portions of the, of the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Guss.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As a former veteran of the United States Army, you know, I can say this with all clarity that this, this empty feeling is like 9/11, where there's nothing you can do. And that's a terrible feeling when there's nothing you can do. Sometimes people think that a firearm makes them whole, makes them a man, gives them the feeling of, of false power, as long as the other person doesn't own one. If animals could own guns and shoot back at hunters, we would limit and minimize hunting. But in America, we think that everybody has to have a gun because they want to be the first one to take somebody's life, you know? The greatest hunt in the world from a lot of people is the hunt for a human being. And as a veteran, I can tell you, that's, that's no fun. The last gun I held was when I was in the military. Put them down because I know the destruction that a gun can cause. And like I said earlier, some people, that makes them whole, that makes them feel like a real man. And real men don't do that. I felt this way when Trayvon Martin was murdered. Same way. Felt this way when, you know, people walk in our school and shoot up children and shoot up teachers and I thought that was a safe haven for our little ones. I thought a middle school was a safe haven and a high school, but it's not. See insanity can take place in a person's head in the split second. Or they can claim to be insane, but they're only doing exactly what they wanted to do all the time. And if we don't become monolithic on this one, somebody else is going to do it. And you better forget about race, you better forget about what political party you belong to. This is about the preservation of human life now. And it should have been this all the time. But somebody else is out there right now, some idiot trying to plan something that's worse than the last thing that happened in South Florida. And see, nothing is going to stop me. I mean, we can't, you know, make a proclamation or ordinance, but nothing can stop me from sitting down writing a letter to the governor and other state representatives and senators myself, telling them how I feel about it and what my stance is. I don't need a proclamation for that. Everybody has a right to do just that. And that's what public protest is all about. You can either march, you can write letters, you can make your voice heard at the ballot box, but there's always things to do. Mr. Ward recited, says something out of the Bible. You know, the Bible tells you when something is definitely wrong, there's three things you can do, not just one. You can speak out against it, or you can physically do something about it, or you can do the weakest thing, disagree in your heart and do nothing. At this point, it's whatever it takes. And it's probably going to include all three of those. So, you know, we, we have to take the options that we have and we have to continue to pursue the same things over and over again until you get a result that you want. And I'm glad we had this conversation. I mean, I've talked about it every time I've had a forum, you know, when this first happened, the first thing I would do would talk about the kids who died innocently for no reason because they came to school with an expectation of being safe. Somebody robbed them of that. Nobody has a right to do that. Nobody has a right to take somebody's life, you know? You didn't give it to anybody, why should you take it? But we feel like at some points that we have to do that, to show that we are angry, that show that we lack control or show that our anger is so out of control until a life is the only thing that makes us feel better. But like I said, as a veteran, you know, taking somebody's life is, is an ugly thing. Extremely ugly. And we got to do something. I can't tell you exactly what you should do, but I'm suggesting what I'm going to do. I think the mayor said it eloquently, you know, well, how he feels and I feel 10 times worse than now. Because there's people out there who think that they have absolutely every right to buy every weapon of mass destruction they can possibly purchase. And I don't know why. But in the morning, I tell you, I will be sending letters to Tallahassee. If the mayor wants to ride up there, we can all ride up there and sit down and talk to the governor, look him in his face, tell him how we feel. I think that would send a message. If you've got a whole, you know, commission that will request a meeting to talk to him. And if everybody else did it in the state of Florida who was opposing, you know, these minimal changes in policy, there's, there's a lot of strength in numbers. And maybe that's the letter we should send to other legislations who feel the same way, Mr. Mayor. And let 100 of us go up there together, 200, 300, along with other teachers, you know, and the man to sit down and talk to him. But I think the greatest impact, we're going to have to come up with that answer. I mean, I'm ready to go. I wonder if anybody else is ready to go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward.
Yes, there's a strange dilemma in the United States. When you come to this country, they, everybody brags about the Constitution. You know, they say what a wonderful document it is and how great it is and how wonderful the Second Amendment is and we've got to uphold the Second Amendment, that's why we've got to have guns. Well, there's another document that everybody likes in America too. That's called the Bible, called the Ten Commandments. One of those commandments is a really big one. Thou shall not murder. And which is a bigger, bigger document, the Ten Commandments or the Constitution? And when they're in conflict, which one do you decide on? It seems to me that a lot of people think that the Constitution is greater than the Bible. And that's a moral issue that we can't deal with. It's a conflict of moral, and it's a character defect in this country. So anybody that thinks like that has a problem. And a lot of people are confused and they become hypocrites. I never grew up with guns. They were always foreign to me. To me, a gun is an accident looking to happen. It really is. Whether you have accidents with guns or you have murder with guns, every time you have a gun, you have a possible incident. I don't know how many kids have unlocked their parents' quote box and shot their brother or sister or cousin or whatever because they see guns on TV and they think it's cool to pull the trigger. This gun culture that this country has gotten ourselves into is a very dangerous thing. It's an immoral thing. And we consider ourselves the moral keeper, the, the, you know, we're so religious and we're so on the right side of God. Well, I'm sorry, you aren't. This is a horrible situation. And I, I think it's really, it's time for a change. Now, it turns out that our congressman, Yoho, gets an A+ from the NRA. He's the top of the food chain in congressmen. And I know we have a congressional candidate who thinks he could beat him, but I don't. But I wish somebody would run and beat him. It's time for a change. I really do. Somebody's got to wake up this country to what's wrong. It's an intrinsic, basic problem that this country has not dealt with and continues to deal. We are not a rural country anymore. We're an urban country. And we're using rural concepts to serve a cosmopolitan country. The Constitution was written way back when, in 200, over 200 years ago. If anybody thinks of strict constructionism, the right to bear arms is a right that everybody has, it's a right for militia. It isn't a right to bear arms. And so there is a, a problem here that this country has not dealt with. From the outside looking in, from other countries, we look like fools. Absolute fools. We have more people dying from guns than anybody that dies in wars in, in all these places. We talk about how many people died in Vietnam and we honor them for being, dying in Vietnam or dying in Iraq or Iran or wherever, whatever country we decide to send them into. Not Iran, but Afghanistan. But more people die from guns than anything else. And we don't seem to get a handle on that. Until we do, this country will always be considered ignorant. And we're not ignorant, we're smart. We can do better. It is really time to change the dynamics of this country. And I'm very encouraged by this next generation's need to make that difference. It's too late for me, but it's not too late for them. And I want the legacy to be that we made a difference in this country, that we changed. And we'll never have a constitutional amendments, but we can vote at the ballot box. And we have such a low turnout to get people elected. So the encouragement is get out and vote, make a difference. If you feel the way I do, make a difference. It's, it should be a calling. It really should be. And I, that's the only conclusion I can come to, is that having not grown up here and came here when I was 10 years old and having to assimilate, it, it does make a difference. You notice this difference. We have other social issues, but that's a really fundamental one and we, we still haven't dealt with it. We're still in the 1770s, we're still having this, the, settling in the West with guns. Now Australia, which I did live in, was settled just like America was. But one day, they decided, hey, we've had enough. They didn't take very much. It's a smaller country, they don't have the Constitution that we have, but they had enough and they actually solved the problem. They really did. So what's wrong with us? Why can't we solve this problem? It is a problem. It really is. And so I'm encouraged and I'll get off my soapbox, but I'm happy to say what I need to say because I got it off my chest. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. I'm going to divide the motion. I, I want to just make sure that we have the different elements and so Commissioner Asantos, please add if I leave anything out. One is to write a letter to the county requesting that, and telling them that we support the, the moving forward with five-day waiting period and the background check elements, that they're entitled to under the Florida Constitution.
For all gun sales.
For, for all gun sales and that we ask the attorney to join in any amicus briefs for Coral Gables, Weston, or any other cities that are moving forward with, with this, what will eventually be litigation. I, I didn't get quite the next one. Ask the city attorney to reach out to other cities to do what exactly?
Reach out to other cities to, I think a lot of other cities are trying to find out how they can work together to gun control locally and just to start that conversation.
Okay, so just kind of keep in touch with what the other cities are doing.
With other cities that are taking similar actions.
Okay.
I think they, the others, the other commissions ask their city attorneys to do similar things. So I think create that network between, between the.
Okay, and then we were going to add the asking, I think just adding into the resolution and the letter, not to armed teachers. We do not support army teachers. It doesn't require any separate item. Okay, and then the element that we will vote on separately and first will be asking the city attorney to draft an ordinance. Madam Attorney?
I was just going to clarify that as to joining any amicus briefs, what we would do is it will obviously track what's going on. Right now, Weston is the only one who said they're going to file suit, but they haven't done so yet. And what we'll do is bring back to you an agenda item because we'll want to explain to you what that particular case is about and make sure that you do support expending any city resources on that.
Okay, very good. Okay, so let's first vote on asking the city attorney to draft an ordinance. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
I do not believe you guys know what you're voting on because you all said that you would not support this, or asking the city attorney to draft an ordinance.
I said no on that one. I hadn't, you haven't said any opposed yet.
I heard everyone say aye.
I did not say anything.
I changed my vote, sorry. I thought you were voting aye.
You didn't hear me.
I don't want you all being, I don't want you all being removed from office for a reason you did not. If you meant to say aye, that's fine. I just want to make sure that you know what you're voting for.
Ask for any ayes.
The first part of the motion is to request the city attorney draft an ordinance, placing a ban. No, 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 if we listen, I said exactly what we're voting on. We are voting on asking the city attorney to draft an ordinance to ban assault weapons and some other things, but that it's the drafting of the ordinance. All in favor of that portion of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion fails. Okay, the rest of the balance of the motion, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you all for being here. We actually still have business before the commission. We're going to talk about where you can buy cannabis next. So you're welcome to stay, but if you would like to leave, we'll allow you to do so quickly and then we'll get, get back to our business.
Fire.
And, and, it's all right. And please.